Thirty P M. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council president. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation, followed by the United States Pledge of Allegiance, and the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, will be led by Mayor Protam Savage. Please rise.
Good morning, Father. As always, we thank you for each and every blessing, for we know they all come from you, and we just pray for your guidance tonight as we conduct the city's business, that you give us wisdom and understanding. We pray your blessings upon our nation nationally, statewide, and locally as well. And we just pray that all that we would do and say and even think would glorify you, for asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer to the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, council members, or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, my name is Larry Shank. I reside at thirty-seven sixty-five Dawn Drive here in Paris. I'm here to speak to you about an issue that I've spoken to the council before, in fact, four times, but hopefully the circumstances have changed. I'm here to speak to you about a COLA adjustment for city employees in the retirement system, cost of living adjustment. Last time the city gave a COLA adjustment was in two thousand eight. It has been sixteen years since there was a COLA adjustment. I have tried to email to you each my little packet, as well as place one at each of your seats. I'm not going to try to repeat the information in there, I think and hope it's self-explanatory. What I do want to say is, what has changed is, the Texas Legislature passed legislation this last session, House Bill twenty-four sixty-four, which now enables, as I understand it, and confirmed by TMRS this morning, that cities who have not participated in COLAs in the past can now initiate a COLA without the cumulative effect of doing so. In fact, before, what happened was, if you tried to bring it forward, you had to make up, as I understand, a portion or all of what you didn't participate in before. So the last time I appeared before you, I believe Gene had to run the numbers, and to do so, it would have been in excess of two to three million dollars. On the other hand, to, just to balance that, when the city stopped this, it was couched in terms of only a temporary thing. Temporary is running to sixteen years. I've got references, I've got the legislative history, I can share all of this with you, but the legislature and its, and its information recognized that many cities were in need of this change, and that many retired city employees were in need of help. I will ask or answer any questions you will have in the future on this, but I know you're doing budgets, so I'm asking that perhaps this is something that could be looked at. Last thing to say.
Mr. Shank, sorry, your, your time's up. I'll, I'll, just a couple of seconds.
Okay, thank you. Think of the people you're going to be helping. These are people you know, people your neighbors, your friends, and your churches. These are ex-city employees. They're good people. Thank you very much. And by the way, there are a number of retirees here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Please.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. I am Lynda Knox, and I live at six fifty-five Church Street, and I'm here to address item number fifteen on the agenda in regard to the discussion and possible direction to city staff to change the zoning in Church Street Historic District to single-family zoning. I'd like to thank you for addressing this so fast and getting it on the agenda. It was just two short year, weeks ago that we asked for this agenda item. As I stated earlier, this is the third in a three-pronged approach to maintain the historic nature of the historic district by allowing infill housing that is not multifamily structures. For two-street historic district, we have our fair share of multifamily dwellings by way of two large apartment complexes, two small apartment complexes, and many quadplexes and duplexes. I'm certain that I'm not the only one who has noticed and participated in the increased restoration efforts of this historic district, which is adjacent to our beautiful downtown. This is because city, our city supports our historic districts, and I'm asking you to continue to do so. I'm not sure if it's going to be appropriate for comments when you address this issue, or if it's even necessary to speak, but I'll be here in case you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is John Lustock. I live at four seven seven Dogwood Circle, Powderly, Texas, seven five four seven three. I worked for the city of Paris from September two thousand three till February two thousand thirteen, about nine and a half years. Recently, the city of Paris received, I believe, two million dollars in federal funds from the federal government. Unless you've spent all the two hundred, two million dollars, that's a place to look for this cost of living increase. The city also has a rainy day fund. You call it something else. And unless you're down to very little money, or plan on spending all of that rainy day fund in this year's upcoming budget, that's another area for you to look at to fund this project. I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Williams. I reside at fifty forty-four Street North Southwest here in Paris, Texas. Once again, I am coming to you about the condemned housing, the mold, the lots need to be mowed, and all, all to clean up the west part of Paris. And I also come to you and invite you to go to court with me. I'm going to Melissa's Court on July the first, two thousand and twenty-four, at two thirty, and this regarding a violation that I, I have committed against the code violation on cleaning lots. I would love to see every one of y'all there to go to court with me, and also, especially the ones that is over that west side of Paris. I asked for a hearing, and it took me a while to get it, but I've got it, and I would like to see all of y'all come out. The, oh, the court is going to be at twenty-nine ten Clarksville Street. I really don't know what it is myself, but I'll find out.
Some of this is a hearing concern? What's the concern?
A code violation that I had committed.
The date?
On the west side of.
Okay.
Could you state the date and time again?
The hearing date is going to be July the first at two thirty, at Melissa's Court on Clarksville Street.
Police station.
Police section. It's a hearing on a mowing lane.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Whoops. Right here. Where do I go to that front?
To your right. Take two steps forward. You feel the, here you go, and the microphone's right there.
All right, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
My name is James Smith. I live at nineteen thirty-three Cedar Street here in Paris. Two weeks ago, I made a post on Facebook. Under my Facebook page, James Lizick the Blind Squirrel, talking about the audible walking signals throughout town. And our mayor, as I was walking up here tonight, he caught me outside and gave me an update. And the update is a decent update. I am very proud of the news of Techstock is looking into the audible walking signals. And as soon as all of them are up to snuff to where it's safe for the blind and visually impaired individuals to cross the streets where we can find them, it would, as soon as that happens, it's, you know, sooner the better. And I would actually be, you know, proud to hear, you know, other city council members with having not only our mayor's back, but all of our disabled citizens back when it comes to making this city more accessible, because I would love to come to a more accessible hometown after I graduate U N T and Texas Women's University with my degrees in rehab counseling or recreation therapy. I know I'm not the only blind individual here in town, but like I told our mayor, I am and can be the loudest. So I might not be here every council meeting, but I will be most likely a very recognizable face, or if not, my white, or my orange cane will as a good identifier. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'm Skipper Steely. I live at eight oh one West Sherman. That's right in between three junkyards and two creeks. And I told my here when he took over the office, I wish he'd do one thing this year, and spray for the mosquitoes. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address? Saying none, Citizens Forum is now closed. Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and consider it as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there? Okay, perfect. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. Regular Agenda. Agenda item number fourteen. Discuss, discuss, provide the direction to city staff and act on a resolution regarding an application for disannexation of property for parcels located at C R twenty-two five hundred, Paris, Texas, filed by M R G Goody Solar Project. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor Protam, Members of Council, good evening. Nexus Renewable Power has been communicating with staff regarding an upcoming solar farm project, which is part of the M R G Goody Solar Project, and part of these lots are actually located inside the city. They are located just to the west southwest and west of the Kimberly Clark Plant. Approximately a hundred and seventy acres of these project, of this project is actually located inside the city, and the estimated capital expenditure on this property is fifteen point eight million dollars worth, which is smaller than the, the total investment, obviously, of the whole project, but most of it is outside city limits. Nexus Renewable Power has submitted a petition to disannex for parcels, and we thought this, that this had been on the agenda previously, but we thought after talking with Nexus that it would be wise to pull it, have the two groups get together, talk about viable options and possibilities. So the primary issue for, with the disannexation of the proposed area, obviously, is the loss of potential tax revenue, which is an estimated, and this is an estimated, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, over the next thirty years. In the meetings that staff has had with Nexus, they've proposed an agreement wherein the city would, or disannex the, the property, and then they would agree to make three lump payments of a discounted or a partial tax paid sum. Over the, rather than get, get it over thirty years, we would get a discounted rate. This project is also close to the incomplete section of the Trail to Paris, and they've also exposed, or demonstrated a willingness and openness to, to work with the trail to extend that project. We do have Mr. Sargon Daniel here this evening. I'd like to introduce him. He could speak a little bit more about the project, and then also, if you have any questions, you could ask him directly. I'll be back, and then also, City Attorney Stephanie Harris will talk about the timeline.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, thank you very much for having me. Let me apologize upfront. My kids brought a little illness home from vacation Bible school, and now I'm keeping distance so you guys don't get it. So thank you so much for having us. We've been proud community members here for over ten years. My business colleagues and I actually bought land here, I think in two thousand and twelve, just west of the city, and we've been, you know, from our point of view, a part of the community for some time. We develop solar here, and we develop solar around Texas. We're based out of Dallas, and this project, the M R G Goody Solar Project, is currently slated to be constructed on the just southwestern portion, call it west, of the Kimberly Clark facility. As a quick heads up, all our projects, we do a lot of work, charitable work for veterans, so all of our projects are named after veterans that have passed that we either knew that otherwise have not been recognized for their work. So in connection with our projects, the reason it's named Goody is we knew Goody, and then part of our charitable support goes to support Goody's family, his wife, his kids, and all that. So we think that's important, is some of the investment that we do in the community, and what we do on a broader basis. On this project, just so you all know, what we have proposed is a couple things. This project was supposed to be constructed and come online by two thousand and twenty-seven. We have tried to pull that forward by two years. We'd like it to come online by two thousand and twenty-five. We think that provides a meaningful opportunity and benefit to the city, the county, Chisholm I S D, and the trail, hopefully, as Mr. Vine mentioned. Approximately ten percent of the project, give or take, would be within the city limits. And so as we proposed disannexation, as we thought about it, what we said was, we took, or we thought about different methods, and basically what we said was, on a tax revenue basis, what we'd like to do is hold you guys revenue neutral. That was the proposal, was that it wouldn't be a discounted amount necessarily from what we would owe. It would just be, if you take thirty-five years' worth of cash flows and bring them forward, those would be worth some amount today. So that's one part. We have also proposed continuing to support the trail. So as part of that, a year plus ago, we moved our project on purpose so that the trail could be completed after, I think, decades' worth of work. And so the trail will run, part of it, will run along the southern portion of these properties that we're talking about here. We've also further committed on that trail, and we've chatted with those, those individuals and said, how can we be supportive? So whether it's some of our construction that will be out there, we're happy to try and accelerate that. And as we were chatting with them, we said, why don't you guys please let us know what we can do to help? But our hope would be that we would also pull forward the timeline for which the trail would be complete through that area. As we understand, there's still four or five years. So in addition, maybe last piece on this, is to the concerns about the health of the community, the support of the community and everything, we have made sure we've gone through different permits and everything, and by our recollection and analysis, everything that you'll see in these permits, we believe is either addressed at the federal level through environmental protections, at the state level, whether it's T C Q or otherwise, or even at the local level. We've worked with the county for several years, and so what we've proposed, for instance, are generally expectations or limits on this project that would go in excess or beyond what is normally done for solar production. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I would be very grateful to you and your support as you move forward. We like to, you know, push these things forward for the benefit of Chisholm I S D, obviously for the county and the community here as a whole. So thank you again for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, is there any discussion?
Yes, and I'm chair of ministers, so I'm just asking to clarify it in my mind. How did you say it would affect Chisholm I S D as far as tax base? It would not affect or it would increase?
So our project, based on our understanding, is a couple things. We signed a Section three thirteen abatement agreement with Chisholm I S D, when those still existed. So a material portion of the tax revenue will stay within Chisholm I S D. Our understanding, based on our discussions with our property tax consultants, because this gets out of my league very quickly, is that this project will account for somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent of Chisholm I S D's revenue, once it's up and running. We had originally proposed that that project would come on in twenty-seven. Instead, what we're aiming to do is start construction, ideally, in the next three to four months, by September, which would mean that those tax revenues come forward two years. So on the one hand, my understanding, and I believe this was included with the memorandum, is that Superintendent of Chisholm I S D is supportive. Obviously, we're going to increase the revenue base there, and we're doing so on a faster basis. This entire project is within the Chisholm I S D, I guess, district, wherever those lines are cut.
And secondly, what is the benefit to disannexation to you guys? I mean, why are you asking for the disannexation?
Sure. So what we're hoping to do is basically harmonize the, the project, the ninety percent of the project, with the ten percent that's in the city limits. The city currently has a special use permit for solar that was passed, I believe, in twenty-seven or twenty-eighteen. We've reviewed it. We have not discussed in detail with staff. We've talked about it a little bit, but from our point of view, what we would hope for is basically synthesizing the different regulatory approaches between the county and, you know, given that ninety percent of the project is in the county, as opposed to the solar use permit. We would see that as one piece. We think that's important. The permit as well lays out a timeline that, while understanding, you know, obviously, we'll respect whatever we need to do, but the timeline that's in the permit, as we've calculated it out, would potentially push back our construction a little bit. And, you know, these things are kind of like a train, and once you kind of get this train going, we really want to keep it moving, because we tend to be time-sensitive because of calendar year cutoffs. So it's really a function of permitting and approvals that would, we think, be accelerated at no cost to the city. And when I say that no cost, I mean, from the permitting point of view, we've committed to those same standards or better at the county level, or through what the state and federal legislature now require. So from our view, we don't believe that they would come at a cost, a regulatory cost, and extra risk to the community through disannexation.
So, and I haven't been out to that property in a long time. How close are you to homeowners? You know, I know it's some houses out, you know, west, I mean, yeah, west of K C.
Yes, sir. So these properties are, if you see them on a map, particularly the ones that are in, there are no homes anywhere in that region, and I think they are hundreds of acres away, because this portion there, you tend to get some homes on the county road. I believe that's County Road twenty-two five hundred, but these are specifically north of the railroad, back and south of that Gordon Lake. So these properties, the reason, the other reason that we propose this is that they're kind of set back and away from everything. And so the risk to homeowners would be very low. The other thing I would also offer is that if you, if you look at the entire site plan or the footprint of the project, it continues all the way west to twenty-two nine hundred. So we have worked with, I'm now comfortable saying, we've worked with almost every landowner, two miles west. So everybody's either in the project or has been contacted, and we've worked with them and basically designed the project to protect against them. And so we think that this area is both remote and that the landowners around are aware of what's going on as they're participating in the project.
And I know, obviously, they sold you the land, so, and, but you know, a lot of times, money talk. The concerns that landowners had with you guys in this project, is that just consistent normally? You know, no matter where you buy, is it pretty much the same concerns, and then they said you, they feel better about it?
So we have actually, we have leased several of these parcels. So we own some of the land, but we've leased some of it. And I think that's important, because from our point of view, that's a thirty-five or forty-year relationship that we're starting with these landowners. And so in each case, we've tried to be responsive to what they want, right? So sometimes they'll come back and say, well, you know, our children grew up in this house. We used to play out here, so we want the solar setback, ten acres. So you are correct that in each case, we've come back and basically tried to accommodate everything that they have going around in that area. So the short answer is yes. What I would say is- What I would say is important is that since they've leased, it's not kind of like we, to put it crudely, paid them off, right, to go away. It's quite the other way around. We will continue to work with them for quite some time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
A question. What happens in the event of a damage to these solar farms? The tornado runs through, and, I mean, how?
What do we do with that?
What do you do with that? And how do you mitigate that?
So, there's a couple layers of protection that we put in place in our case. Number one is insurance. I will admit, it's very hard to get insurance for these sort of things, because, as you can imagine, it's a nice big piece of glass sitting out there. To our lenders, who don't tend to be in Texas, they don't understand what baseball-sized hail looks like, right? So, when these things hit. The long and short of it is that, number one, we have insurance around it. Number two, these panels are not stationary. They move from east to west every day. And because they move, they have what's called stow abilities. So, if there is wind, the entire farm will flip and basically kind of go vertical, right, to avoid. The next piece is that we have business interruption insurance, so that would cover for revenue purposes. Because if I were a landowner at the city, what I would worry about is some sort of project just being abandoned and looking terrible, right? Or being some sort of environmental risk. The reality is, though, that these are all inert objects. So, in the event that anything ever happened, let's say from an electrical point of view, we operate everything remotely and can operate it remotely, so we can basically shut off the plant in sub-one second. So, one, we would repair it. Number two, we're insured a little bit, probably like our roofs on our house. We all know how painful that can be. And number three, we have business interruption insurance.
What about a scenario where a solar panel affects another homeowner who's in the area?
So, like it flies off or something like that?
Flies off, I mean.
Yeah. So, I believe that would operate probably the same way as any other. So, as any situation where, say, like, God forbid, I had a car, you know, and my car was parked out on mine, and my trampoline or something, if I had one, ended up in my neighbor's pool, it would be the same thing. I would say that, however, we have a lot of, we have like an astronomical amount of insurance in general. So, we have a general insurance policy. We have like knock-on effects for everybody around, and we're required to maintain very high levels of insurance. So, in short, if I were that landowner, I would make a claim against us, and then we would revert, we would turn that over to our insurance. The other, in short, answer is that, in reality, what we would do is, we'll go out and try and fix that as quickly as possible, generally, because it's in no one's interest to have that going on for a long time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'll add just a quick comment. Usually with these disannexation topics, they usually tend to be pretty contentious and whatnot. But I will tell you, you've come very well-prepared, and I appreciate you looking out and kind of understanding all the factors that we have to kind of look at from a council perspective for our citizens. So, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for looking out for those issues that we're very in tune with and trying to make sure that we cover all of our bases, so.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
I don't think we're quite done talking you through it, are we? Are you ready for me?
Oh, okay. Oh, please.
I know that you've got the memo. Folks out here haven't gotten the memo. As you will remember, disannexation is controlled both by the local government code and we have an annexation and disannexation policy. Our policy says, in the disannexation, in the state statute, is there not a whole lot of guidelines there, but we look to that for timelines and public hearings and publication and all that. Our policy dictates when we will consider it, and our policy says that the city will consider disannexation of any area within its corporate limits, if so requested by a majority of the property owners, and if the area fails to meet at least one of the above seven criteria, and if it doesn't create any keyholes or islands. No keyhole or island problem here. One of the seven factors is whether the area is populated with residential development, which this is not. So, I think your policy dictates that you consider this. Doesn't mean at the end you have to grant it, because there's some other, we've talked, and there's some other possibilities here, short of disannexation, which would include a 380 development agreement, that we could work through those, the SGP issue with them. But in any event, what you're deciding today is whether to just go ahead and outright deny this application or to institute the proceedings. We would recommend that you institute the proceedings, because I believe that the policy dictates that you consider it. So, what you would do, if you want to follow that recommendation, is you would act on an ordinance tonight, instituting the proceedings and setting the public hearings. And your calendar is going to look like this, if you choose to proceed. Between June 25th and July 6th, the city attorney will send out notices to other taxing entities and service providers, railroads if necessary, and that has to be done by thirty days before the first of two public hearings. Between July 16th and July 26th, we'll publish notice of the first public hearing in the Paris News. Publication has to be between twentieth and tenth day out from the first public hearing. Between July 23rd and August 2nd, we would publish the second public hearing. And because those periods overlap a little bit, we could do one publication for both hearings on July 25th and save us a second publication fee. We would have a special meeting on August 5th for the first public hearing, and on August 12th, we would have the second public hearing. And then, on September 9th, you would act on the ordinance, whether or not to disannex. And that's day seventy-seven from the institution, will be today, seventy-seven days from today. The whole thing under statute has to be done within ninety, so we're well within that period.
Well, I do respect the recommendation that we should consider it, because it doesn't, it passes all seven of the list of why you should consider this. Personally, I'm not in favor of solar farms around our area. I think they disrupt the land and the beauty, and while I'm not those property owners, and I understand it is their financial decision, I will not be a supporter of it, even if we do a hearing, so.
And I do want to reiterate that what the recommendation is, is just to start the proceedings. It's not a recommendation for or against disannexation at this point. We've had some good meetings with Mr. Daniel, and what we would do is continue to work with him and his consultant to see if we could work out one kind of agreement or another. But this timetable gives us ample opportunity to bring you a recommendation between now and that final meeting in September.
So, I understand we're going to have hearings coming up, but are there homeowners that are within, I mean, not just landowners, but homeowners that are within that disannexation area?
No, ma'am.
There are no homes on those four parcels.
Okay. And what is the acreage?
I came up with two hundred and ninety-one acres for the four parcels altogether.
Yes, so the four parcels altogether, I think that's right. If you look at where the city line cuts, it's an estimate of about one hundred and seventy acres, because the city line cuts along that creek. And so, portions of the parcel are in and portions of the parcel are out.
And I think you all came up with that, that's the entire parcels, but part of those parcels are out in the county. So, did you come up with the?
One-seventy.
One-seventy for the portions of the parcels that are within the city limits.
And is that currently, is that farmland?
It's none of the above, actually. It's, I believe it's just, they're just, Mr. Moore's just bailing hay.
Any more discussion?
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
Oh, so, I'll make the motion that we start the process, I guess, start the process of disannexation or start the conversation.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, got a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those, all those for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, say no. Okay. Motion carries three-two. All right. Item number fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss rezoning from two-family dwelling district to SF1, one-family dwelling district in the Church Street Historic District and provide direction to staff. Mr. Rose.
Yes. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, good evening. This discussion item is brought to you today because at the last meeting, residents within the Church Street area came forward to make comments that they don't appreciate or like the new development going in, specifically duplexes. And so, you give us direction to get into it and figure out how best this issue can be resolved. We have had meetings at the staff level, and the stretch between Church Street and Sherman and Long Street is the area that we are looking at currently, and it's also in the Historic District. And it allows for two-family dwellings, specifically duplex as of right. And I guess that is the issue at stake. So, what we are trying to look at is how best we can rezon or look at alternative means not to allow this multi-family duplex to go in as of right. Currently, the future land use map calls for low-density area, and so duplex multi-family should not be encouraged in that area. First one to Section 9B21, the zoning ordinance requires that the city council, if there's a case before it, it has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation. And so, if you give us direction, we will write proposals and recommendations, go to the P&amp;Z Commission, and then, after that, it will come back to you for a final decision. Staff has also looked into, inasmuch as council has decided that rezoning should not be initiated by the city, and we should rely more on residents moving or making such efforts. We are looking at how residents, we can meet with them if we can have some sort of meeting to have an idea of their interest as to how we can get together and get this resolved. And so, if council will allow, we can schedule a stakeholder meeting with the neighborhood, especially on Church and Sherman, and then figure out the specific areas to be rezoned, if possible, and see how best we can resolve that. One of the considerations also that has to be looked at is the street along which area that has to be rezoned. If you look at the map, to the left on from First and then to the Third, there are areas that has more of multi-family, and so, some areas not. And so, if we do this survey or group study and stakeholder meeting, we can specifically know which areas that we want to add or not add. And so, our recommendation is to ask you the direction that we should go on this proposed rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to open this up to council and see what is your liking. What do you think? What do you guys think?
Do you want to go first?
Well, my recommendation is to go ahead and start the process of rezoning. I mean, we have heard last council meeting, as well as from lots of people within the last year. So, I would like for us to go ahead and start the process of rezoning. And this does include the whole Church Street District, correct?
Whole. Okay. So, we are currently looking at Church Street between Sherman and Long Street. It can change depending on, you know, when we go to the drawing board, based on what areas are specific they want.
And then, east and west?
Yeah.
Does that include Main Street?
That is subject for review, so anything that will come up. But that's why I'm saying, there are certain areas, Main Street toward Church Street, in between, there's a lot, the percentage of multi-family is heavy. On Church, it's not. The question is, do we, because already existing multi-family on that side, we should leave that alone, or still we have to still?
Well, I-
Rezon it as an addition? That's up to-
I think the request and the recommendation was for the entire district, I mean, not to affect what's already there, but not to create any more, so as to protect the entire Historic District. Can I ask Linda, was that the recommendation for the Church Street District?
Yes, ma'am. The Church Street Historic District is a little misleading, because we, and I was one also that thought-
Ms. Knox, I'm sorry. Do you mind coming up to the mic?
I apologize.
No, you're fine. Come on up.
Yes. I was also misled, you know, just by the nature of the fact that the Church Street Historic District doesn't just, isn't just Church Street. It also includes South Main, yes. And so, those residents, they were here at the last meeting, the residents from South Main Street as well as Church Street were here. And that is the district, is Main and Church Street.
So, Ms., if you don't mind me asking this one question, because I'm trying to get it, understand, Ms. Knox, how far east does the Historic District go over?
I'm not so sure. I think it runs right into downtown, the historic downtown, oh, well, east, wait a minute, east.
Over to-
Oh, it just goes to Church Street. Now, if a property has, that goes all the way through to Third Street, okay? So, Church Street is like Second, okay? If my backyard went all the way through to Third Street, then that part of Third Street would be included in the Historic District. But it doesn't. So, the house right behind mine is not in the Historic District. But the property next to me, which is a lot that goes all the way from Church Street all the way through to Third Street, that is considered, the entire property is considered part of the Historic District.
But are there many houses that go all the way over to Third?
Well, there's a few.
Probably three or four, maybe.
I don't know for sure exactly how many, but-
Either way, that land would be protected if we did this, but you're saying the houses that actually reside on Third Street would not be considered Historic District?
Now, there are some single-family, or there's some single designations. There was the house we saved, I think it was a couple of years ago. There was the oldest house in Paris that we saved from demolition, and it was sold on the courthouse steps, and a couple bought it, and they have plans to restore it. And that's on Third Street. So, there are some pockets, you know. What was your question? I'm sorry.
So, we're talking about Main, Church Street, and some parts of Third Street?
Talking about South-
Parts of Third Street.
South Main.
Yes.
And Church Street, and the property that extends into-
Ends all the way to that, okay.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But it won't be Third Street at this point in time. I mean, there may be some, there's been some talk, because the residents want to see this expanded. The-
So, it's HD2, what we're looking at right now?
Right. Yes.
For anyone in the crowd?
HD2?
There you go.
So, it looks like it stems all the way east to Third Street, just like what you were saying, if the backyard extends all the way to Third.
So, you see some of those that kind of have little cut-ins right there? Those are, those are properties that do not extend all the way. So, those are single, those are kind of single structures that are not part of the Historic District at this time. I understand that there's a talk on the Third Street to be included in a Historic District, but that hasn't started yet.
Yeah. But it actually goes over to, I guess, it's First or Second, southward?
That's Main Street.
That's Main, Main Street, on the west.
Uh, yes, Main Street and then First Street, southwest.
Oh, First.
Yes. So it's covering a lot.
Yes. And I think, uh, Mr. Ose, I, I wanna make sure that we, we understand this correctly, too. If, uh, if we went for a recommendation to just proceed forward, taking this to P and Z, you and, and the staff would look at the holistic approach and try, try to find the right districting for this to, to cover SF1, correct?
Yes. Uh, basically, what we are looking right now, the Historic District is an overlay of the zoning. So we'll have to look at both.
Okay.
And see how best different interest groups want. And we get a consensus, and then come out with the final, uh, boundary in areas that we're going to. That is why we are suggesting that we have a stakeholder meeting, because we, we hear different areas, and we want to be sure.
Okay.
All groups are satisfied.
So, Councilmember Norman, you were-
Just to be clear, it's not to, um, do anything to existing properties, but for new structures, new builds, new, um, like, turning a large house into a quadruplex or something. So it would be any new, not any existing.
So just, just to confirm, this would be to grandfather in whatever, whatever's existing currently?
Yeah.
It stays how it is, if it is over the, the limit of SF1? Let's just say if it's a 2F, it stays that way. But everything else going forward would be, if this would be, um, passed through, then it would be an SF1 district?
Yeah, the, so the zoning, well, if it's done, it will not allow anything more than single-family.
There we go.
Is this, is this gonna become legal non-conforming, is what they are?
Yeah, they're, they're already existing.
Is there any, and, and, I guess Rebecca, you can answer this. Is there any, uh, consideration on, uh, it's kinda like what we did on, I don't remember what street it is, 31st, you know, where you grew up? You know, we decided to, um, not include the, like, on First Street, South, uh, First Street Southwest, um, on the west side of First Street. So we, there are some, uh, I think duplexes there, uh, probably some opportunity, because there are some vacant lots, so it's some opportunity for duplexes possibly on the west side of it. I, I just don't know if I would want to eliminate or stop the, you know, somebody from having an opportunity to build a duplex in that particular area. I, I get it with Church Street and, and all of that, and, and, uh, South Main. But if we go over to First Street, the side, the west side of First Street, you're eliminating people from the opportunity to build duplexes there as well, because it's, it's in the HD2 district. Is there any consideration of maybe not including the west side of First Street Southwest?
I think the goal was to protect the whole district. And there was, back 15 years ago, 20 years ago, when, when it was, um, uh, deemed or, um, uh, changed the Historic District, that there, there were studies, um, on current houses that, that should be within the, um, Historic District. So, so that was an in-depth study at the time to include that First Street. And we're just trying to protect, or the residents are trying to protect the whole district.
And I gotta, just to clarify, Mayor Portem Savage, if we look, um, like, like if we're looking right at where the, where the edge is, um, kind of right at that 90-degree angle, right at the bottom of, of HD2 there, anything south of that? Is that kinda what you're referring to? Like, that opportunity zone for-
Yes, yes, south of that. But even up north of, of that area, um-
There's some vacant lots, is what you were saying?
Yes. Uh, most of the vacant lots are south, exactly, what, what you said, south of Washington Street.
Yes, sir.
But, um, I know there's some rental properties north of there. And I can see opportunity for, for builders, the way, with the way they're building now, to come in and do a project for a duplex. Because just west of First Street, you know, you get to Second and Third, there are several duplexes in that area. So I can see them coming up to First Street, or, you know, not on Main, but up to First Street. So I don't, I guess, I guess I'm just considering them as well, uh, looking at from their standpoint. But, uh, protecting that whole area. I guess when I, when I looked at it, and it's to my fault, I was thinking Church Street. Because, you know, I, I can remember back when I was in college, you know, when kids would, out of town, would wanna see Paris, Texas, I would take them down Church Street. Hey, look at these old beautiful houses. And so I, I'm totally in favor of protecting that. But I don't know that we're holding First Street, the west side of First Street, accountable right now, because I know when you do upgrades and things in the Historic District, there's certain things that you have to do. I don't even know that we're holding them accountable right now on that.
We are.
We are?
We are.
Okay. Because I see things, and there's some stuff there that don't look like anybody's holding them accountable. Okay. But anyway, uh, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I was just considering. I wanted to bring up that point.
Sure.
That there's opportunity there for duplexes, and the way, uh, Paris is going right now, uh, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody, uh, gets a little upset because we eliminated that opportunity. And that south, um, that you're talking about, that's my district. So I'll get the phone calls.
And if I may, too, if I can also add, one of the benefits of having a commission or a board is that you've, you've tasked individuals with vetting this stuff for you as well. So, uh, one, so I might recommend that we let the P and Z vet these things for us, and then bring back your recommendations on Church, First, Main, and all these areas here. So that's the, that's one of the roles that they serve you as.
Yeah, I, I agree. And also, I, I think with staff involvement on that, noting this area in particular, maybe we can take a deep dive and take a look along that area and have good recommendation to P and Z to be able to observe that.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think we all have a, a, a collective interest here to make sure that everyone's good for the Historic District. But you make some fair points, both sides, so, um, sounds like, just to clarify, are you, you're kind of on the side of saying, hey, let's take this to P and Z?
Yes.
Okay. Any other further discussion from anyone that, uh-
What you're talking about, just to clarify, so that we know what we're talking about, is you wanna take the entire district and go a- What I understood you to say is you wanted to go ahead and initiate zoning proceedings for the entire Historic District in front of P and Z. Was that what you said?
I think that was, that was the goal.
Okay.
But, yes.
Because I've heard, I've heard different things, um, from the panel. So what we need from you is to get that clarification, exactly what course you want. If, if the consensus of the council is to go ahead and start the rezoning for the entire district, or if, or do some deep diving stakeholder meetings. I mean, that's what staff is gonna have to have, is that clear direction.
Well, I, well, I know, I'm just one person, but I think we should do some deep diving. That's just my opinion, because there's still some things I, I'm a little confused on. And it sound like a little confusion going on. It's not no clarity to me. So I think we need to do a deep dive. That's my opinion.
So, yeah, when we're talking about, uh, the entire district, we're talking about HD10, HD3, HD7, 13? We're talking about all of them?
No, just HD2.
Okay. All right, so that, that cleared that up.
My recommendation was to take it to P and Z.
Right, right.
Okay.
HD2?
HD2.
All right. Okay.
So is that, is that a motion?
Yes.
Do we need a motion?
It would probably be helpful so that we-
I know it was a discussion, but just to probably get clarity-
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to take HD2 and go ahead and consider that to be rezoned for a single-family and no additional duplexes, or multi-family, I'm sorry.
Before you go on, uh, how about the stakeholder meeting?
Yeah. I wanna make sure that we get clarity on that. So is that, would you like to have a stakeholder meeting or negate that part? That should be part of the motion, too, of, of giving direction.
So is that not something that P and Z will do, if we turn it over to P and Z?
Don't they normally notify?
They could choose to do that. The question is going to be whether you want the city to initiate a zoning petition, a city-initiated zoning petition, uh, because that, you know, that has timelines and public hearings and all that kinda stuff. If you wanna send an issue to the P and Z about rezoning that, and let them determine if they wanna have meetings and stakeholder meetings prior to the city's initiating that petition, we can do that. But that's, that's the, we're, our questions are procedural.
Right. Because technically speaking here, we could have a public forum regarding this, this, uh, this agenda item at P and Z. And they would have a letter sent to them within the Historic District, correct?
Yes. I mean, if, if you want to simply go ahead and initiate the zoning change with the zoning petition, there's gonna be a public hearing at P and Z, uh, there will be a public hearing here. At P and Z, they'll listen to everyone at the public hearing and make a recommendation to council. And that's what it sounds to me like y'all want to do.
That would not involve stakeholder meetings. That'd just be public hearings. But, but the other option is just to send an issue, and then P and Z can decide to have stakeholder meetings or not.
But those are stakeholders that come, that get notified, and would come to the, uh, public hearings.
Sounds good.
And the, the clarity behind that is also, just to, just to make sure, is also, you know, similar to what we've had in the past with pickleball courts or dog parks or whatever. We have those stakeholder meetings to understand those that are the movers and shakers of that interest group. Let's figure out and see what they're wanting. So this could either be initiated from us, or P and Z has that power, too. But really, it, it depends on what you're motioning. So it could be accomplished during P and Z, if, if you're not wanting to have a separate stakeholder meeting, aside from P and Z.
I think what Stephanie said, the second, where P and Z listens to the stakeholders and make a recommendation to us to vote on.
Right. And we would go ahead, uh, as I understood your motion, and as what, so we're communicating clearly, the city would go ahead and file that petition, initiate that petition, and it would go through the process, which includes public hearings at both P and Z and the council level.
Yes.
All right, so we've got a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, those opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. All right. Thank you for that lively debate there. This is good, though. This is what we wanna see, so, fantastic.
Absolutely.
Agenda item number 16, considering approved future events for city council and/or city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything?
Not right now.
Okay. All right, good deal. Agenda item number 17, adjournment.
So, hmm.
All right, you got a second? All right, got a second from Alex. We are adjourned.